Roll call, please, Barb.
Todd Jari is absent. Cindy Osterlander?
Here.
Awesome romantic.
Here.
James Brock.
Here.
Jason Reeves is absent. Tim?
I'm here.
Okay, next is the minutes from the workshop of April 7th and April 21st. A motion for those.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? If not, if not, all those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is discussion of the aquatic center. Whoa.
Got two tims. That's not a good thing.
I see that, too. He doesn't get to blow twice.
No, he's giving us feedback with his two tims.
I'm shutting one down. Just hang on a second, folks.
Yeah.
My tablet finally updated. And my phone is off, so we should only have one now.
Okay.
All right.
How about that?
Linda, you want to start?
Sure. All right. Okay, I sent you all kinds of information. In discussion of the swimming pool, hopefully you had some time to look it over. We have last year's manager on here, Jacob Langgraf, and we have this year's dual managers. So they are here to answer questions, give us some feedback, et cetera. Ah. So. Basically, on the decision making, I gave some discussion items. We had, we had all the lifeguards hired. The new lifeguards have not been trained yet, and there's nowhere to train them until we are able to have a pool that's available. The YMCA is usually where they went for training. Jacob has offered to do the training, but because it was getting so late and we weren't sure what was going to happen, the new lifeguards were actually let go for now and because they have not been trained or certified. The returning lifeguards were told, hey, we don't know what's happening yet. If you need to find a new job, find a new job. If we're, when we, if and when we open, then we'll call you and let you know that we'll let you back. You can come back. And all of them were told that, hey, next year, you're first in line. You're, you're hired for next year. So that creates its own problems, you know, having enough staff to manage the pool if we have all of the areas of the pool open at once. The disinfectant, of course, of, of the pool is a concern if we open it. We need somebody to clean all the restrooms and around the pool and all the touch points. If we leave the main locker rooms closed, we could just open the two family rooms. And the two family rooms do have showers in them, but getting even 50 people through the door and be able to use restrooms and shower and so on would be a little logistical of an issue. But cleaning the shower rooms consistently and keeping it clean would definitely be something that would have to have a few full-time people to do. Um. Swimming lessons are a concern right now. Most of the swimming lessons are covered by the school. The school does not have summer school until August at the earliest, if they open in August. If they open in August, we'll have to have that discussion again, whether there's, you know, if we do open, whether the numbers are low enough to have for COVID to have swimming lessons because it's very close contact. Kids have their shoulder, their heads right on the lifeguard shoulders. They're just learning. They're spitting a lot, that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of contact with our lifeguards and with each other during the swimming lessons. We had talked about, well, maybe if we just opened up and had parent kid swimming lesson time, so parents could come in with their kids in the morning and we would have a lifeguard there watching while the parents taught their kids. Concessions would be another issue. Probably we'd have to close that. That's a lot of high-touch area. There was cleanup. There's tables. There's money handling, et cetera. Talked about having bring your own chairs, so we didn't have to clean the chairs as often. Sanitizer stations. Maybe eliminating some entry and exit points of the pool, but then that causes backup of people. And I don't know if that's a good idea or not. It doesn't matter, you know. I mean, chlorine kills a virus, but the problem is the chlorine isn't everywhere. It's not outside of there. It doesn't keep people from, you know, spitting on each other or bleeding on the side of the pool or whatever it might be, you know, sitting next to each other, touching all the different things outside of the pool, the ladders, the, the family rooms, et cetera. Other things we talked about was, you know, the slides themselves. Do we close the slides? Do we leave them open? Are we going to be able to leave them open if we don't have enough lifeguards? How to funnel people into the pool if there's a lot of lines, people that are upset when they get to the pool? If there's, if we have to have a cutoff of number of people. We'd have to set up something for a guard for front desk safety. We do have this stuff from the elections, so we could always put that up. What kind of requirements we would have for the guards and the staff for, for wearing masks, et cetera, if we would have any such thing. And then I guess a question for a lot would be insurance, recreational immunity, lawsuits, bad press. If we are found to be after contact tracing, hey, it happened at the pool, you know. And then. Yeah, looking at, I froze up?
Yeah.
All right. Um, looking at other pools around the area, Oshkosh is closed. Winnicott County is open. Nina is supposed to open mid-June. Berlin is undecided. About three quarters of the pools out there have not decided. About a quarter have closed. And a few have said they're opening, so a lot of them are just waiting to see what happens with the numbers. Budget-wise, we had budgeted for a loss of about $90,000. Usually lose between $70,000 and $80,000 a year on the pool. Depending on how many people we have coming in, if we had 50 people a day, for example, or, and I mean, it was consistently that, regardless of weather, we would be losing, if we opened right away, $106,000, which is above budget. If we wait till July 1st, my guess had been we'd be losing around $80,000, which is, is normal. And then if we don't open, we'll still have about a $33,000 loss. There's still costs involved. We still had to open the, we still had to fill the pool. We still have to test the heaters. We still have to run the pumps once in a while. There are some costs that we've already incurred for hiring and cleaning up and, and painting and these kind of things, so. So that's what I got for costs. Expenses would be down because we don't have as many lifeguards, but we'll need more cleaning people. So. Trying to run two machines here. Some of the concerns would be that the marble fund is used for a lot of our future repairs, and of course, our stocks are not doing as well this year. They're getting a little better, may get worse again, and we're using that money towards that Miller Park project, so keep that in mind. We do have a, a grading issue that, due to a new law that we have to fix next year, it's going to be at least $25,000 to do that. So it's slated for next year. And then I guess, you know, some of the options of what we could do to try to bring in more people, like only have couple-hour sessions, et cetera. I had on the list. So I guess I'll just leave it to you guys to start having a discussion and what you think about this whole thing.
La, do you want to touch on the insurance?
Yeah, I, obviously, I think recreational immunity will still apply for the most part. I certainly would want to touch base with our insurance carrier to see whether or not they give any guidance. I, I, I think that's kind of the, the less concerning, the idea that they're going to be able to contact, trace back to the pool. You know, I, I think that's going to be difficult at best. I think the, the world has changed to some degree. You're not going to be able to cover every circumstance. So you're offering to the community the opportunity. You certainly would put out notices to the effect that, you know, we can't guarantee your safety or your health if you choose, because we can't, and we give that kind of notice. I think that probably will cover us under the liability issue, but I want to get input from our insurance carrier.
Okay. Linda, you want to touch up, touch on the current numbers on the COVID? And what phases we're in right now, close to getting out of, or?
Well, it looks like we're close to phase one. We're still out, we're still in the original no contact as far as the state's concerned. We haven't seen a downward trend of 14 in all areas, though we're darn close, as long as it hangs on. Because it changes day to day depending on what tests come in. But right now, the only thing that is keeping us from going into phase one is the number of healthcare workers that are getting sick. That's been an upward trend instead of a downward trend. Whoops, Jason's trying to get in and I'm not letting him in. All right, there he comes. Letting him here. Hi, Jason.
Hello. Jason.
All right. So I just went over everything that you already had in your packet. So we're just talking about, Led says insurance shouldn't be a problem, but he wants us to talk to our insurance carrier. And the numbers, yeah, so, you know, we're very close to having phase one, which doesn't mean anything legally anymore. It's just a guidance. Phase one means that you can have 10 people in a group. And if we do another 14 days of downward trend of numbers, we go into phase two, which means you can have 50 people in a group. Not to say that we can't immediately have 500 people in a group. It's just you're not following the guidelines of the Department of Health, so.
Hey. Questions? Any aldermen that have any questions?
I guess.
I do.
Jim? Jim?
I, I'd like to hear from the people who would be actually working there, what they think. How they think they could handle it.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be hard with people that get angry with us. You know, limiting the amount of people. We're 20-year-olds that are going to be controlling, you know, the amount of people that go in and out of that place. It's going to be hard to keep up with all the PPE and all the, I guess, restrictions and guidelines on our part. I mean, we're not trained to do, you know, run a pool in a pandemic. I mean, no one's really trained to do that, but I just think for our part, it's going to be really hard to manage a place that needs so many restrictions.
Yeah, like we already talked about, there's going to have to be a lot of signage, just, you know, clearly stating the new rules, which there's going to have to be a lot of. You know, we thought we could just designate even one of our front desk and concessions people, which we don't longer, any longer need. Just to do all the cleaning for us. If we do open the slides, there's going to be, you know, cleaning the railings of that, obviously, and the bathrooms, all the door handles. So there is a need for basically an all-time cleaner, we would think. So that would just be something we could pass on to one of the concessions peoples. We did do a survey of our returner employees, and six of them said they have not yet found a job. And then there's a couple looking, only a few have a job, and of those, some are also willing to leave that job and come back to us. So we have 12 returners, 10 that are possibilities as of right now, 6 that are for sure a possibility, so.
Yeah, and at a time, we would need four guards on staff, one management, and then a front desk person, and then an all-time cleaner. So six lifeguards, I guess, and one management. And then.
And we do have some new employees, new hires that are certified. They just aren't trained at our pool. So we could work something out there, because they are certified by the Red Cross, but that would just be us training them, which we could definitely do if we, if we ended up meeting them, so.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the other things that we've thought about is the training that has to go into it. For us, it's going to be close contact because, I mean, you're, you're saving the person, and you have to use each other for those training purposes. So that would be hard to do with our employees as well.
Yeah, and see, the Red Cross, since I'm an instructor, I get all their updates. Their current update is that they don't recommend lifeguarding courses at this time because of the close contact. And if you're in a CPR class, all participants need to be six feet away and have their mask on, except for when they're going to provide rescue breaths into their own mannequin.
So that would make training obviously difficult.
How much training do they have to have?
Um, if we are just having returners, they've already had, they're already trained in our EAP and everything like that. So we would just need to do a couple training sessions for refreshers and stuff like that. But if we do hire the new hires that are certified, they would need to be trained in our whole EAP system, and that would be a little bit more time-consuming.
That means emergency action plan, if you didn't know.
Yeah.
So what are you guys using as criteria for potentially reopening and setting rules in place?
Well, like we already said, just the capacity limits. You know, Linda, we talked to her about this, and we, at one point, we're playing around with the idea of only AMRO citizens being allowed in, but that would obviously be really hard for us to determine who lives in AMRO and who doesn't. We also played around with, you know, like 20, or sorry, like two hours of AMRO people, two hours of Oshkosh people, you know, and then a cleaning break in between there. We played around with the idea of doing private parties just for Oshkosh people. And then that's a way that they could utilize the pool. So obviously, would, it would be a lot of, you know, sanitizing everything. It would be impossible to social distance people in the water. We cannot make our lifeguards yell at people. I mean, they have other duties to do than, you know, being concerned with how far away people are standing apart. So if that means us designating someone to specifically do that, I don't know, but that'd be extremely difficult.
So what would be an ideal number of people or a limitation to put on this? Like, and how would you correlate to something else? So for instance, if we said in the bad, if we looked at the Badger Bounce Back thing, and we said we're in phase one for sure, but we're maybe close to phase two, is that right, Linda? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we're not in phase one yet, actually, so we're not even supposed to be visiting your neighbors yet, according to Badger Bounce Back, so.
You know, I think it's safe to say there is no legal control at this point in time. They're guidelines only. And certainly, there's something for your body to deliberate, but in terms of making a decision, open or not open, it's got to make economic sense. So 10 is not a realistic number at any.
That's kind of the problem I have.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I don't think you're bound by that, and if you decide to reopen, you know, I, I, I think it's got to be something more than 50, quite frankly.
When you look at the CDC guidelines, they go a little, you know, they don't talk about the Badger Bounce Back so much. That's the federal level. And when they talk about groups of people, they say, well, you know, we don't recommend large groups, but also look at who's your, who's your audience, you know? Are you going to have more than 10 people who are high-risk? And this kind of a atmosphere doesn't really lead to that, you know, because you're looking more at young families and young lifeguards. They're not considered high-risk. But of course, you also have to worry about where they're going home to, but I don't know where our control should start and stop with those kind of things, you know? How much do you put back to the, to the public to just be smart, you know?
Is there any way to put some numbers together? Like, let's say we allowed 50 people in there. How much would it cost to clean and have people on staff with a capacity of 50 versus what's normal? Is that 100?
That's, I mean, that's what's on the worksheets that I sent out.
Okay.
So. So.
I don't think I got that because I was looking for it.
Oh, it should be in your workshop underneath the, in the agenda underneath the.
Oh, I see now.
Budget analysis.
Yeah, I see it now.
Then with that, that's, that's based on having a 6% capacity, which is 50 people. So if we allowed more than 50 people, then your revenues will go up, of course. I mean, this is a lot of guesswork. I've never had to do, I don't have anything to compare it to, so I was basing it off of what, how many hours I thought each person would have to work, and I'm just, it's a lot of guessing. Then, and that's just having the one shift, not having these several two-hour shifts. So we might be able to get more people in during the day if we did several two-hour shifts. But I'm thinking that you would have to have some kind of a sign-up program, that they're not all standing in line waiting for their opportunity to get in, you know? You're going to be at it all day trying to tell people they can't come in otherwise. If you're going to have it that low of people, you're going to have problems. So.
Don't get stuck on that 6% thing, because if we had 749 people in the pool at all times, that would be insane. We would not have any spot for them. I think that number is a little high. So, but yeah, like 50, obviously, the numbers are there, so.
Yeah, our average number of people, let's see, what did I say? Average total patrons in the pool was 495, which was anywhere from five people to 1,300 people in a total, total day. But the average was 495 people in the pool, at, at the pool at a time. Wait, no. No, that's average total. I'm sorry. The average number in at a time was 142.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Sorry. I'm like, that sounds really ridiculous. Yeah, 142 was the average. It could be anywhere from five to 433 people. The highest we had last year at the pool at one time on a day like today would have been 433 people there at a time, so.
And that's pretty crazy for us.
Yeah. So when there's 142 people, how crowded is the pool? Um.
Not very.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Steve Katy.
Oh, gosh, I didn't ever recognize you, Steve Katy.
Well, you know.
That's funny.
I think we're making this a little complicated. I, if you guys want to open up the pool, open up the pool, shut the slides down, forget about lessons, hire a couple of extra people on to keep things clean, make patrons bring in their chairs. If you don't want to do a normal capacity pool, shut it down, don't open it at all. It's impossible to police this 50. You're going to get nothing but flack from the public. It's going to be a nightmare. You might as well take the hit shutting it down and get yelled at, or open it up, but with limited access to some of the things that are highly, you know, that could make people sick. I don't care about people getting out of, out of the pool with chlorine-laden hands, touching stuff. They're not going to do anything. Do care about the bathrooms. I don't know, we're going to have to work on that to see if we can keep it clean. But if you want to close it due to financial reasons and save the cash, then you should do it. But doing it halfway, you're going to lose a lot of money, and you're still going to, people are still going to be unhappy.
Yeah, and I'll just echo that, like, it's, it was a nightmare for four years, just dealing with small, little things. I can only imagine people knocking on that front door, not being allowed in, and they're going to get pretty ticked off if they're coming all the way from Oshkosh and didn't call or didn't go online. That, obviously, that's their problem, but that's just going to turn into a whole big issue.
I just don't want, you guys all saw the news in the last couple weeks. I don't want us to be that picture of that pool down south that they keep showing over and over again, of all these people crowded into the water, and everybody going, look at this, AMRO sucks, you know? I don't want that to be us, so.
My, my thoughts coming into this was, I agree with Steve. Either, either open it or you don't open. I don't, just halfway stuff, it just doesn't work with me, or you're going to lose money. The money shouldn't be the only issue, but fairness, all that. How do you police it?
Anybody else?
Yes, I'm on board with that, too. Yeah, again, you know, it, it just eliminates any confusion and disgruntled patrons in, you know, the pool. Either we decide to open it or, or close it.
Jim? Or Tim?
Are you going to have enough lifeguards if we open it fully without the slides and stuff like that, or are you going to be hurting?
Hurting. Uh, yeah, I mean, we don't have enough lifeguards to fully staff the place just with everything open, with slides and stuff. We could find enough lifeguards possibly, but we'd need to reach out to them and see what their plans are.
Move the slides down. Would you have enough lifeguards?
Um.
It depends on how many people are there, I guess. If we need, you know, if we have, say, there's only 50 people in the pool, we might need two or three stands open, so two or three lifeguards on duty at a time. So then, just say, three or four there, just one to replace, one to clean, I guess. So it really depends on the number of people that are in the pool. Just because of this, we might see less people showing up in general because they're scared. So there is that, but, you know, I guess it really depends if we have the deep end open, that adds an extra lifeguard. So it really depends on how many people show up, I guess. Without the slides, though, that is two less for sure, actually, three less for sure because of the drop slides, so.
And we could manipulate staffing to relieve that lifeguard that's a cleaner, a specially-trained lifeguard, put him on the lifeguard staff, and use a front desk person who's not specially-trained, and they're cheaper, and have them do the cleaning.
Exactly, and we have plenty of those.
Yeah.
Jason?
I would support opening the pool with the dedicated cleaners and shutting down the slides and the diving board if you feel that's necessary to.
Anybody else, any comments?
What is the actual limitation in total number of people in the pool?
749.
For what, what tells you that you're there? Are you, you have, you have a rolling count of how many people are in the pool at any given time?
Yes.
And?
We're required by state law to take account of everybody coming in and everybody leaving the pool. There's turnstiles. We get counts throughout the day on that, so we have to know by state law.
Just a hypothetical question. If we set that number at 500, what difference would that make to the discussion?
Nothing. We've never had 500 in the pool at this, over my four years. This past summer was the highest with 433.
Okay.
And that was a, that was a doozy for our guards. With 433, you're going to need all the stands open, plus you need one or two more roamers. And usually, those days are hot, so you usually have two or three in the office. So on a day like that, I think we had 12 total lifeguards on at a time, just to keep everyone safe.
Okay.
A lot of the pools are saying 25% capacity, which is 187 for us. So the ones that are opening, I've seen. So the ones that are opening, I've seen them say twenty-five percent capacity.
What's your reaction to that, Steve Katy?
It, it's totally up to you guys. Uh, no one comes in the maintenance room and yells at me if they don't like decisions that you made, so it's all on you. But, but that being said, I guess realistically and safely, the way that I, I guess I look at it is, Linda said about three hundred and fifty was approximately our average for last year, something like that. So that's what we can handle. So if you make that, let's say, four hundred, and you call it a day, no matter what, we know that we can handle that as a capacity.
Okay.
And no one could complain that we have, you know, just six people in the pool anymore. It's, we have an actual real number of people using the pool, so.
Yep.
Even that twenty-five percent, that was only exceeded sixteen times last year. You guys are probably projecting that you're already gonna have a lower capacity anyways, just.
But are we taught because if Oshkosh is closed and everybody's looking for something to do, oh, and here it is. Well, it's good Amro. You know, that was the same problem with the parade and everything. Oshkosh closed and we all went, "How the heck are we gonna handle all these people that wanna come here?" You know? So, I know, but somebody was saying they passed by the quarries today and they've never, ever, ever seen that many people at the quarry in red granite. They said there had to be a thousand cars out there. So, I don't know, you know, are we gonna, are we gonna have less people or are we gonna have more people? It's hard to say.
I've heard people from Berlin saying that, because they're probably shutting their pool down. They're not sure yet, you're right, Linda, but I've heard them say if Amro opens up and Berlin shuts down, they're coming this way. So it isn't just Oshkosh, it's all the other communities that are down.
So the finances of the whole picture, what are we charging?
Two, three bucks.
Three for a child, four for an adult, three for a senior.
I mean, you certainly can look at that, especially if we're losing money. Uh, and if we think demand is there, the idea that you would increase the fees by a buck might make some sense, I don't know. Do you have family passes and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we, we consider getting rid of those just in general for this year.
Okay, okay, so you're gonna just pay per person that walks into the pool?
Yep.
Yeah, so you may be able to, if the demand is there, increase revenue by a dollar if the demand is there.
And a, a lot of the discussion was, you know, narrowing it down to just the school district. And I know they said that would be hard, but it might help, you know, even if we aren't sure when somebody, people cheat, but.
They all cheat. For years, we had school district or, uh, school district of Amro or what was it, city of Amro and town of Amro at two different prices. That's impossible to police.
Yeah, I agree.
It's failed since the day we started it.
I agree. I wouldn't bother with that. No, I just think that if you make the decision to open, um, you know, if they wanna come to the pool, paying another dollar is not gonna change anybody's world, in my view of it. If the demand is there, if there's other pools that aren't opening, Oshkosh isn't opening, if Berlin doesn't open, you now obviously have increased demand, I tend to agree with Linda. But then you have the right to raise the price for two reasons. One, demand, and the other one, COVID, cleaning.
And in that respect, is, is a dollar enough? I mean, city residents maybe go up a dollar and non-city too, I don't, I, I don't know if that makes, that's just my thought there, you know?
Yeah, I get, you're right, we're paying for it. I don't mind that.
My, my thoughts here aren't, aren't just the money, right? I'm looking at the people who are gonna be working there. And the consensus I'm getting from them, it's gonna be a nightmare. And that's what I'm mostly concerned about. I, I don't care about the money. Pools are a loss, parks are a loss, all those things lose money every year. We're gonna lose more money this year than probably any other year, but.
Say we, say we open up for a weekend and somebody tests positive.
Yeah. Yeah.
One of the employees tests positive, then what happens?
Exactly.
You gotta shut it down.
And the, the tough part with people from out of city coming in is they don't know the rules. And so then it, I mean, it's, it would just be a, a harder time, I guess. It's doable, but it's just harder on the lifeguards.
How feasible would it be to do the online sign-up and set the capacity at twenty-five percent? And then you pick your time slot and you've got three hours or something to be there.
I think people would end up complaining, um, you know, they'd be like, "Oh, we didn't see that, we didn't check it." Uh, we don't have the technology to do it.
And you also have the issue with people, uh, signing up with no intention of coming to, just so they could.
Well, if they, if they would pay online, like, then they're tied to it.
Yeah, right now, we're not set up for, to accept online payments. Um, that's something we could look into. I think it would be, you know, a task for us, but we haven't, we haven't ever looked into that yet, so.
The other thing is, you know, as we were talking about earlier, we were kind of saying an all-or-nothing kind of a deal with some caveats. But the other thing is, state law does give the pool managers the right to limit capacity according to what they have on staff. So if they don't feel that the pool is safe, or they don't have enough lifeguards to cover, uh, the, the patrons in the pool, they have the right to limit capacity. We do not have to have seven hundred and forty-nine people in the pool. If they think it's a three hundred, three-hundred-person day on any time, even a non-COVID year, they could say, "That's it, we're only gonna do three hundred." It gives them the flexibility to have the staff work with how many patrons are there. And I think that would be the key to any plan going forward, if you were even thinking about opening it. I wouldn't give them a hard number on what the, what the, if you're gonna open on, on what the capacity is, I'd have them decide according to staff how, what the capacity should be.
I will be talking to our insurance people tomorrow to see if they come up with any new recommendations. The last time I called them last week about it, they just directed us to the CDC website and are saying that they want us to follow what the CDC regulations are. And at this point, we're still at not allowing even groups of ten. Do we have diplomatic immunity from it? Yes. But if we put something out there that's contrary to what the recommendations are for safety and we can't meet the safety guidelines, are we then gonna lose that recreational immunity? So, I, I don't know.
The insurance piece is important. I said that. You gotta know your insurance carrier is on board.
No, insurance, it's one of those things, with something like that, they may pay out once, but you may lose your insurance carrier.
Yeah, so they gotta be on board. I'm not, I'm not running past insurance on this.
As of last week, they were not making any recommendations. They were saying, "We are asking that you follow the CDC guidelines."
Yeah, that's not gonna be acceptable, obviously, because they have to make a decision. Are you going to cover us or are you not gonna cover us?
Current DHS, that's Wisconsin DHS guidance says, um, "At this time, the Department of Health and Social Services or, and Health Services recommends that all public pools, splash pads, and water parks remain closed until we meet the benchmarks established in the roadmap to reopen Wisconsin. It is not safe to bring together groups of individuals that are not part of a single household or living unit into an environment where sustained and close contact could occur. You can track the state's project benchmarks at blah, blah, blah. This is rapidly evolving. It is unlikely this recommendation will be changed unless significant progress in meeting gating criteria are met. They understand there are many positive benefits from visiting public pools. While it isn't the same, there are other fun outdoor activities that families can participate in, blah, blah, blah." Um, "Once it is determined to be safe to reopen, operators should coordinate with their local Department of Health to ensure that best practices are being followed." Yeah, that's about it, really. But that was, as of last week, they just added those guidelines saying that they don't recommend pools be opened at the Health and Social Services.
Yep, which, which ties into the liability piece where we started. I'm not, I'm not giving any green light without insurance. If there's no insurance, the insurance company says, "We will not cover you for events at the pool." The pool cannot be open, period.
I, I, I think that the, uh, the insurance company basically passed the buck and saying, "The guidelines is what they're gonna cover."
Yeah, and if they come up with that, I don't think we have a choice. Honestly, you do not, because there's too many, uh, things you can trip over. Now, I'd be curious what, when a county has for insurance coverage, given those circumstances. Recreational immunity is not gonna cover you in the middle of a pandemic. If you make poor, poor decisions on how you organize events and how you cover the event, uh, there will be somebody that's going to want to sue you. And the biggest thing with insurance is insurance defense. You need somebody to answer, and that's where your insurance company's got to be there. And if they're running for cover, you've got a major problem in opening the pool.
And unfortunately, uh, no offense there, but, uh, insurance companies and lawyers run the world, so.
No offense.
No offense, no offense taken, other than, other than, other than I did, no, no. I, I will not argue that point, and your, insurance companies, I can talk to you all day long about. But clearly, Barb, if they're saying, "We're not, we're not telling you nothing other than look at CDC", and then Linda just read the recommendation that you're not open your pool, um, we, it's a non-starter. It's a non-starter. We gotta have insurance, at least for the point of defense. You know, to, to assert recreational immunity, to assert that we did everything reasonable, uh, humanly reasonable to prevent, uh, the transmission or prevent the, the whatever at the pool.
Any more comments?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, if we do open that, uh, we could always entertain the idea of those laser guns that shoot, you know, shoot them at the door with the temperature. Um, it's a person at the front desk could do that, if he's ever working that.
Yep, no, I think there, I think there's a way to do it, I really do, but you can't if your insurance company's gonna say, uh, "No, we're not gonna offer any coverage or insurance defense" because you just read that blurb that Linda read saying, "We suggest you not open pools."
So I guess we would have to talk right now based on the fact that the insurance company is going to cover us. If they, if they do.
Yep.
Okay, if they don't, we're done. If they do, what do we wanna do? So.
Yep, there you go, thank you.
And we don't have to decide this tonight. If we wanna wait another two weeks and see what happens with the numbers, because they were a little more favorable this week, maybe, and, and the projections show that it's gonna start going down as the summer goes on, whether that really happens or not, because nobody knows what's gonna happen. It's, Laura knows, I thought we would be done with this by now, but we're certainly not, so, um.
But are we gonna have the staff and the training all in and please? I mean, that's the key too.
You're not supposed to train right now, so I guess that's, I guess that's up to the city, how they wanna handle that. They're not supposed, the Red Cross says right now that they're not supposed to get in close contact, but that's up to, that's just a guidance.
I, I could make a motion on this. Uh, if we make a motion to postpone the decision for two weeks with an opening no earlier than July first, would that be acceptable to everybody?
I like that motion. What do you think, Maria?
I just think that the longer we wait, the, the less staff we're gonna have. Um, they're gonna get other jobs, they're gonna, we're, we need jobs, we're college kids, you know, we need money. Um, so we need, we need some sort of decision or some sort of consensus to kind of figure out what we're gonna do, what our staff needs to do. Um, I think the longer we wait on a decision or on a consensus, um, the less staff we're gonna have and it's just gonna be more of a nightmare, I guess, for us.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, I can see that point too, you know?
Do we have a second on that motion?
No second?
Jim, or Tim? I'm not gonna second, but for lack of a second on his motion, I would make a motion that we just shut the pool down for the summer because of there's so many unknowns. Lack of staff is one of the biggest ones. You know, like she just said, they need an answer so they can move on with their lives too.
I'll second that so we can have a discussion.
Yeah, from, from the first impression tonight, I've gotten from the staff that they're, they're really hesitant about opening.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be really tough for us. It's our first year managing and we're not trained to do this, this whole.
And I can only provide so much advice to them.
Yeah, so.
I'm not, I'm not trained for it either, Maria.
The same last name.
Brother and sister.
Not married like some of our lifeguards thought.
No advice anymore, huh?
Any more discussion?
I, I would agree with that, so we let our, our employees get on with their life for the summer.
I'm not really sure we can make an informed decision without the insurance aspect of it. I think that most of us would lean towards potentially opening the pool at some point if it was safe. But we, none of us can predict the future.
I mean, we can revisit this and say, "Hey, Maria, do we have, can you find out if you have any lifeguards and, because now everything's looking great and we wanna do this?"
Yeah.
I suppose.
Well, the thing with that is we would need a date. Um, you know, if we told our lifeguards, "July first, we're gonna open", that's a month that they're not, you know, making any money. Sure, we can employ them for probably the last week of June, just, we got a lot of cleaning up to do and everything. Um, but that's three weeks that they're not making money, so who knows if they're gonna jump on board with us? So we would have to, I mean, we would really just need a date, preferably sooner rather than later.
Our next meeting is the sixteenth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can offer you the sixteenth as a time to revisit it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see any harm in that, uh, but the motion on the floor is to shut her down.
Any more discussion on the motion?
To say no, Todd Yari was interested in keeping it open. Of course, he hasn't heard the conversation, but.
If no more discussion, uh, roll call, please.
Todd Yari is absent. Cindy Ostrender?
Aye.
Todd Simranthick?
Aye.
James Brash?
Aye.
Jason Reeves?
No.
And Tim Dulittle?
Aye.
Todd, was yours an aye?
Oh, mine was a nay, no.
Yeah, okay.
So you got two nays and three ayes? Right, Barb?
I think so.
Yeah.
I have a question for Steve on this, if I, if I could.
Was, was that the correct count, Barb? Three to, three to two?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, Jim?
Wait, but we can still revisit this in two weeks, correct?
Somebody on the prevailing side, unless I didn't hear the entire motion clearly, it's to shut it down, period, or is it to shut it down until we have more information? To shut it down, then somebody on the prevailing side has to move to reconsider at the next meeting. So if, if, Barb, what do you, what do you got for the motion?
Well, if, uh, Jason wants to reconsider to put it on to the, the next agenda as a vote for the council, that would be okay.
Well, Jason voted against the motion. It's gonna be somebody on the prevailing side. If the motion was no pool this summer, which I guess it was, and so, yes, somebody on the prevailing side would have to bring it back.
So Jim, Tim, or Cindy, if you wanna bring it back up in a few weeks or a month, you can do so.
Correct. Well, no, you gotta do it next meeting. You get one shot at this thing. Gotta come back at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so that's how it sits this evening. Now, this is a committee, however. Yeah, this is, this is a workshop meeting. Yeah, I think that may be a little different, because the workshop recommendation goes to the full council.
Right, and I don't even have it on the agenda for tonight, so.
Okay, so it is a consensus. I am going to take the position as city attorney, that tonight, there is no plan to open the pool, but this should appear on the council agenda at the next meeting, and that's when a final decision will be rendered, because of it being a workshop.
Okay.
That's my interpretation of workshop work.
And pool people, that means if you find out by then you don't have enough employees, I mean, you can let them know, but it is what it is.
Yeah, so this will appear on the next agenda as a recommendation from the workshop committee. Is the way I'm going to interpret it, I know you may have done other business at the workshop that you have run with, but I'm not gonna run that way. This will go to the full council, we have one missing, um, and, you know, it will sit there until, as a recommendation only, so it's a recommendation to full council. Full council gets to vote on the 16th and will vote on the 16th.
Okay, everybody understand that?
Everybody understand that? Any questions on that?
Well, I believe Berlin was gonna decide on the 10.
Okay.
So that could aid in our.
Could affect the decision as well. Yep. I agree.
Okay, anybody else have any more comments?
I have a question for Steve Katie. If, uh, the great, the great project, Grady, if it turns out that we don't open it all this year, can that be done this year?
Steve's.
Unmute, Steve.
Unmute, Steve.
We usually want him muted, but not right up to.
Got that right. Uh, yes, it can be done this year. Um, right now, the pool is plumb full of water, and, um, I'm running the pumps, you have to exercise this stuff or bad things happen. So right now, tonight, I'm stressing the heater. Um, tomorrow, I'll take a look and see what's going on there, but I would have to empty all the water out of the pool and pull the grading. We have that slated for next year, along with some, uh, the, the grading along the side of the pool where the kids walk on, coatings wore off, and the fiberglass is showing. So we can hold off on that outside grading, but the grading in the bottom of the pool is required by law to be replaced.
You're gonna do that in spring, before the pool opens, or what?
Yeah, I think that other grading is stamped, uh, uh, January, February, March, April, May. I think May is when that grading's date is up. So, yeah, we'd have to do it in the spring of next year.
So the thought would be, if we don't open the pool, that one of the things you could do is carry over monies from this year into next year to do that, instead of taking it out of marble. But, um, you know, we do have concerns about future state aids. Um, I know they're majorly in debt at the moment, so.
Um, just a thought, I'm just looking at the radar here, we might wanna start this other meeting.
Okay.
We might lose power. It's a big one.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take off, Linda, if it's okay.
Okay, like.
Yep, see ya.
Thanks, luck.
Everybody be safe.
Alright.
Cool, take care.
Alright, you guys have a good, uh, rest of your night. Thanks for letting me have, or let, letting me come, sorry.
No problem. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Bye, thank you, guys.
Starting in a few minutes, or if everybody's ready?
I gotta make a walk. I gotta stretch my legs.
Who wants to do invocation?
I can do it, if you want.
Okay, Cindy, thanks. I'll be back in a few minutes.
Okay.
Turn the light on, Cindy, we can't see you.
I know, I was just gonna say, I think, I think I unplugged, I had to go in the bedroom tonight, so I had, with it being earlier, it's hard to.
There'd be some neat-looking storms.
There, is that better?
Hey, there you are.
Jim, is that storm close?
It's in Washoe County right now.
Oh, yeah, it's close enough.
It's both by, uh, red granite.
Ooh, well, that won't take about 20 minutes, then, to get here.
Uh, yeah, it might be sooner than that.
Yeah, pretty dark here right now.
Is it?
Yeah.
Not.
The wind is open, and I can hear the rumbles. It might pass just north of us.
Yeah, we might get lucky and it won't drop.
Yeah, the way it looked on the news, um, earlier, it was like we're right in the eye of it.
There's a lot behind it, so.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna get slammed.
If this doesn't hit us, the rest will, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Praying for the Poygen split again.
What's that?
The Poygen split, you ever hear of that?
No.
It hits like, it hits like Poygen, and it goes like this, and it hits.
Oh, yes.
And Fond du Lac. It doesn't hit us, it always goes.
It's like Winnebago.
Yeah.
Is that like Winnebago that doesn't?
Yes. Cuz I was gonna say, I lived on Poygen for years, I never heard of you before. We got hit, though, in 2001, it was really bad.
Well, everybody got hit on that.
Yeah.
Okay, we all ready?
Yep.
Okay, I'll call a city council meeting to order, uh, two and second, seven o'clock. Uh, invocation, and pledge allegiance.
Hey. Great eternal, we come before you this evening and ask for your protection, first of all, as the storm's coming in, um, your guidance and wisdom to lead each one of us at this council meeting. Help us to make the best decision for the City of Amro and the residents. We thank you so much, amen. Like to say the pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance. To the flag.
Of the United States.
States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Uh, roll call, Barb, please.
Todd. Cindy Ostrander?
Here.
Todd Simrantic?
Here.
James Brash?
Here.
Jason Reeves?
Here.
Tim Doolittle?
Here.
Did I miss somebody?
I don't think so. Okay, uh, motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carried. Citizens' statements, anybody out there has something to say? Okay, uh, about the minutes of May 19th. Motion to do.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes?
I do. It's something, I wasn't able to read the minutes, I wasn't able to open them. Uh, something being said about, uh, police chief, was talking about the, the, what's happening up by the water treatment plant, and it was said that that was a park. That's not listed anywhere in our, in our city stuff as being a park. It's not listed in the, as a present park or a future park on the, on the, uh, comprehensive plan or on the park committee's plan.
Barb?
It is in the park committee plan, it's called Hillside Park, and the acreage is also listed as part of our comprehensive plan in the parks. It was part of the original park plan from 1980, um, that was transferred over, so I'm assuming it was done prior to that.
It wasn't, uh, it's not on that one we did last year.
Yeah, it is.
Not in it.
It's in there, Jim.
Yeah.
I'm almost ninety.
I don't wanna argue the point, I'm just saying it's not in. The only part that was in there was, there was one question in our survey, on do you use this park and how often? And I didn't see anything. It came up a couple of years ago, we talked about, there was something with the water treatment plant, they couldn't get in there, it was before you were in charge there, Steve. And, uh, it was, and it was determined at that time, we talked about it, and we said it wasn't a park. I don't remember exactly what meeting it was, but, but it had to do with people parking on the sides of the road, and they were not able to get into the water treatment plant. We said this is not a park, so we don't have to have parking. But some, somehow, we did put it there.
I just pulled up the, I just pulled up the 2011 plan, and Hillside Park site is listed at three acres, it's on page 28. Three acres located next to the wastewater treatment plant, the site is open space, there are no plans for development at this time, due to DNR regulations and proximity to the wastewater treatment plant. So it's listed right in the 2011 plan.
Okay, but it wasn't listed in the last one we had, why not?
It should be in there.
That's, that's why we put it in this one, was because it was in the previous one, cuz we had that discussion at the time.
Yeah, I questioned it even then, I'm like, where the hell's Hillside Park? And then, when we figured out where it was, when we started this whole new park plan.
Yeah, we can figure it out later, but it's, it wasn't listed in the, that last one that we did in 2019.
As 2001?
Last year, you had the Parks Committee meeting, where you had the list of the parks, you had that, uh, uh, expert come in, and then you had that big paper you put together.
Comprehensive plan?
Yeah, yeah, it's not in.
Yeah, but I do recall discussions on that part. During our sessions, we talked about whether we should even put any signage up there for the fishermen or anything like that, and it was voted that we wouldn't manage up, cuz we didn't wanna really promote it. So I know we talked about it during the process, too, so.
Barb, I remember talking about it, and I was actually approached, or I talked to a couple of residents that live across the channel, and they, apparently, they have some paperwork saying that it was not approved by the council to be a park. Um, they're gonna be approaching the Parks Committee, I think, at our next meeting to discuss it. But they're claiming it's not a park, also.
That's fine, it's not, we just thought, we couldn't find anything.
What I vaguely remember is it was considered a park just for the city, considering it as green space to, uh, count towards all of our, whatever. It was some stupid thing that the state government wanted numbers, and somehow, because it was public property, it was counted as green space, which converted it into park somewhere along the way. So it's being considered a park because it's city green space, but we're not supposed to, we weren't never supposed to designate it as a park because it's Water Department property, correct?
That's not what I recall, I just remember reading it in the previous book that it was considered, called Hillside Park, and it was in the previous one in 1980, also.
I kinda remember what Jason was saying. Um, I do kinda remember the council not, I can't prove it, but I do remember him. I thought they said it wasn't a park. We decided that.
I don't know.
So is it, is there something we gotta look into a little bit more?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to research. I don't know. I don't remember.
Okay, we'll, we'll research it, okay, Barb?
Yeah.
Tony?
I'm looking at page, I'm looking at page 12 of the City of Amro Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. Under 2.5 city recreational facilities, there is no listing of a Hillside Park. There's Riverside, Elmer Erickson River, Walk Park, Basketball Court Park, Sterns, Box and Hounds, and Amro Ballpark. Those are the ones listed on page 12 of the court.
Okay, we'll do some, maybe search on it and, and get everybody up to date on it.
No problem.
Okay, any other discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, on, um, the roll call, I'm not actually an expert, but, uh, I think I should be a council member and not a committee member, I think that's a carryover from the old roll call.
Oh, yep, I'll make that change in your.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else with any corrections? If not, a motion to approve the minutes, or, I mean, a roll call, please.
Todd Yari is absent, Cindy?
Aye.
You Ostrander?
Aye.
Todd Simrantic?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Cindy, uh, finance personnel?
Yes.
Didn't even vote.
Art?
Couple of us didn't even vote, we weren't called. It's aye.
Did you get everybody, Barb?
Did we lose her?
Barb?
Alright, who did we miss? Just say aye or nay, and I'll write it down.
Yeah.
Aye.
Tim and Jim?
Jim says aye. Jim says aye, okay.
Okay. Okay, motion carried. Uh, finance personnel, Cindy?
Yes, moved to the floor, resolution 200602-1 expenditures.
Back, Barb?
Yeah.
Okay, Cindy, put it on the floor. Who's second?
Yeah.
No second?
I'll second it.
Jim, discussion?
Oh.
Discussion on the bells. If not, uh, roll call, Barb, please. We lose her again?
Cindy Ostrander?
Aye.
James Brash?
Aye.
Todd Simrantic?
Aye.
Tim Doolittle?
Aye.
Jason Reeves?
Aye.
Got them all. Motion carried. Administration, Linda?
Uh, I really don't have anything for you today, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Linda?
Did you hear back on the streetlights?
No, I'm just looking at my list of to-dos, and I was thinking about that, that he never got back to me, so I have to try a different person, cuz he's obviously ignoring me.
Todd, that, Todd, that streetlight you're talking about, you're only looking for the one by the, um, pond, right?
I think it's, yeah, probably one by the pond, now that I've walked it and paid attention to it, I think it should be like halfway down the pond at some point, basically right across from the driveway at the, uh, retirement home there, or whatever it is.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I'll open it right now, so don't forget.
Anything else for Linda, anybody? Okay, let's go, uh, next counter, uh, meeting schedule should be on the computer. Uh, anybody have anything else? Uh, if not, a motion to adjourn. Motion by Jim? Second by Jason. All those in the favor of, uh, closing the meeting, 75 by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carried, thanks, stay safe.
Yep.
Yes.
Take care.
Green Lake County just got a severe thunderstorm.
Yeah, I'm losing my internet all the time here. What's that? I keep losing my internet, so it must be gonna get bad here. Your nacho shipment. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.